... on the Internet, so you can watch it at home. If you don't have cable, you can use your computers to watch the council meetings from now on. Secondly, on January 23rd, there will be a meeting, a public meeting on frac sand here in the council chambers at 6:00 PM. There will be a presentation by staff of SAC frac sand issues, and then we will be taking public comments. At that meeting, we'll be limiting those comments to two minutes, so that we can get through all the people who may be interested. We will also televise the meeting, so if you don't wish to come, you may watch it on TV. And if you do have any written comments, you'll be able to present those to staff anytime through next Friday, January 27th. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Monica Call, roll please.
Mayor Miller. Councilman Thurly.
Here.
Craig.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Salyers.
Here.
Bojekowski.
Here.
White.
Here.
Under the required public hearings, item 2.1 is Plasticomp Inc. Expansion Project for Economic Development.
Okay, I'll open it up, and I'll open up the public hearing, and first ask Lucy to explain, please.
Yes, Mayor, and members of council, the community development staff began working with Plasticomp as they were evaluating their expansion efforts here in Winona. They also were looking at other locations. They looked at multiple sites, and they did purchase the Minnesota State College Southeast Tech Airport Facility on the west end of the city. They had also considered Technology Park, and the Port Authority worked with them to review that site. And with the limited land availability in Winona, when they found a currently tax-exempt building that worked for their needs, that seemed to be a good fit for the community and for the company. Prior to purchasing the building, they did lease the facility. And with their project acquisition and their addition and investment, the estimated market value of the building is to be $2.6 million in 2013. This would generate new taxes, not previously collected. And in your packet, there's a number of pieces of information about the before and after effects of this project. The company, if they do receive the abatement, or the rebate really, of tax, as proposed in your agenda item, they would be required to create at least five jobs. Now, the company has already added eight people since we started working intensely with them in July. The council resolution that you have before you is to approve an abatement that would be a pay-as-you-go. That's the most conservative approach to take, because only what the city would receive would be rebated to the company for a period of 10 years. Now, in your council resolution, there's a second option, and that second option would be to rebate up to 90% of the tax that the city receives. Another potential point here to note is that in the city comprehensive plan adopted by the council, it specifically talks about the composite industry in Winona. And this is very consistent with that plan that says in particular startup composite firms should be supported from the economic development perspective. So if there's any other questions, I can answer them, or I know there's company officials here, too.
Okay, any questions? Debbie.
Lucy, just to start off, on the handout, you had the summary of project, it says, Plasticomp.
Uh huh.
In our packet there. Below one of the items, it says overall payback of city and county, not considering present value, is five and a half years. Just for, could you please explain that a little bit further for us?
Sure. That computation, that doesn't include the present value, states that for what the city and county would be foregoing, once the company did return to fully paying the taxes, that would be recovered in five and a half years.
Okay, any other questions? Yeah.
Lucy, does this process require that the county also agree to the tax abatement?
That is a separate request to be considered by the county separately.
So in other words, we could approve it, they couldn't, or vice versa?
Correct.
Okay. And then, when, assuming this moves forward, whatever entity approves it, if both do, other taxing entities still receive their full tax receipts from this property tax, correct?
Yes, that's correct. Actually, over $40,000 would be collected per year by other taxing bodies, such as the school and the state.
Yes, this doesn't affect the amount of taxes that they receive?
That's correct.
Thank you. Questions? Okay, Debbie?
I forgot, Lucy. And I know they looked at the other considerations you said, like TIF and those programs, just wandering to it, they looked at the Minnesota Angel Tax Credit Program as well?
Yes, in particular, the company can comment on that, but we reviewed extensively the Angel Tax Credit with them. And that's a program offered through the state of Minnesota. And many of the programs that the state has did not fit with this project, or there are no funds remaining.
And we also, I believe you said in here, too, that we've done only one tax abatement program, that was for the Washington Crossing.
That's correct. That's the only other abatement, and actually, there's no TIFs at this time either in the city.
Do you recall what the amount was for that?
The tax abatement for Washington Crossing was a tax abatement for 10 years, not to exceed $102,500.
Thank you.
Any other questions, George?
Well, we have in here, invest a minimum of $3 million. Now, what they've already invested in the addition of the building, is that part of this $3 million, or is this $3 million above and beyond what they already did?
That includes their current ongoing investment in that addition to their building, so that is included in that amount.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, Lucy, correct me if I'm wrong, in layman's terms, okay? Abatement is, they pay the tax.
Correct.
And then the city, in this case, the tax would be about $18,000 a year, correct?
Correct.
And then, the city gets the money and gives it back to the company?
That is correct.
Okay.
It's a rebate.
Right, it's a rebate. Are there any conditions on that? Is there any interest, or it's just a pass through? In other words, they pay the tax, we get the tax, we pay it to the company?
Right, there's a number of conditions that we pay, or rebate that portion of the tax. They have to maintain and keep the jobs that they agreed to create as a result.
That was five jobs over, within two years, which they've already done, right?
A minimum of five jobs. And then, secondly, they need the investment in the building and expansion. And they also, of course, have to pay their taxes. And there's a number of other items outlined in the resolution and agreement.
Okay, so if they do all that in layman's terms, they pay the tax, and then they get the $18,000 back. Under this, it would be for 10 years.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Okay, Lucy, if we need you later, okay? Is there anyone else wishing to speak to the Plasticomp Expansion Project for Economic Development? Okay? State your name and address.
My name's Paul Ness, Miami 718 Springbrook Drive, here in Winona. And I'm CFO at Plasticomp. I want to thank you, Mayor Miller, and the City Council members, for considering this development partnership tonight. As Lucy has talked about, Judy and Lucy have worked diligently with Plasticomp over the past four years, looking for the right form of development partnership. We truly thank them for their effort. And the reason it took so long was probably the path that we took to get the right opportunity for our expansion. Again, as Lucy's addressed some of these issues, I'll still cover them. We first looked at the Southeast Minnesota Technical College campus at the airport. Wonderful quality facility, but required legislative approval, and required all kinds of painstaking steps to get through that. We simply gave up on that solution several times in the process, even though it did come back around at the end. We just didn't think it would ever happen. We also looked at the weight of property in I-90 and Riverbend Industrial Park. We also looked in La Crosse, and we had an available building there. That actually probably was the best from a building standpoint, but for other reasons, we did not choose that. Our investors are local members of this community, and they are vocal that they want jobs with good benefits created here locally. Plasticomp management agrees for many reasons. The support of the city development staff gave us confidence that the choice of Winona was correct, so here we are. Normally, development partnerships are created prior to construction. Since we are acquiring a state-owned facility, or we did acquire a state-owned facility that was not on the tax rolls, and we were not sure if a sale would actually ever take place, there was a lot of unknowns there, the normal development partnership programs didn't work for us. We had the cart before the horse, definitely. We marched ahead, acquired the building, and we did that in July, and knowing that a lot of things needed to take place before we could use that as a manufacturing facility, we needed to add the addition to convert it from an airport hangar facility and a training facility to actually manufacturing. We needed warehouse space, and we needed loading docks. So, as we moved along, we moved ahead of maybe what a normal course of action would be, and we were certain that the finalized program, the city would certainly support us on that. Therefore, the only development partnership tool available left was the tax abatement. Debbie, you asked about the Angel Tax Credit. That was not, we'd looked at that twice. It's not an eligible, we're not eligible for that. We had simply brought in too much money into the company over time that was greater than it was allowed by that Angel Tax Credit, so that was not available. The city has the goal of developing good jobs and to strengthen the community. If you turn on the TV or check the Internet news, you will see politicians all claim their desire to create jobs, they just struggle with how to do that. Development partnerships with successful small companies are how this can be done. Plasticomp's goal is to develop our customers and grow. To do this, we need the best people we can find, along with many local companies, to build equipment for us. There are 10 long fiber lines in the world with our long fiber technology, all with significant parts manufactured by Winona manufacturers. Growth in employment is an outcome of our growth. It's not our goal, but it is the result. In the final analysis, we all end up in the same place, growing jobs. I'd like to provide a little bit of history to you in regards to Plasticomp. We started the company in 2003 with just two employees, Steve Bowen, our president, who's out on a sales call tonight, so he could not be here, and Rhonda Pitts, a customer service person. We see our customers come first. Our purpose was to build a global long fiber thermoplastics technology company. We have done just that with our many partners all over the world. Four years ago, in 2007, we had 12 employees. That is when we started working with the city development group. We are currently at 38 employees, 31 full-time, seven part-time. Of that, six full-time and four part-time have been added since we bought the building in last July. All of this without any form of governmental development assistance. Plasticomp is successful, and we're proud of that. We support 38 people and turn pay taxes to all levels of government. This is good for a healthy community. We simply ask you tonight to confirm our belief that Winona does support growing businesses and will invest with us to speed up our growth. This will be good for jobs in Winona and the community. Thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions the council has of me.
Okay, questions? Debbie?
Thank you, thank you, Paul. And yeah, great story, you know, that's the entrepreneurship, I think Winona's really known for that, so I know everyone really appreciates that. I have a couple of questions, just to make sure I'm clear. I know you said you have a total of 38 employees, and you said, does that include the ones, the six full-time, four part-time that you added since this summer?
That would include all of them, yes.
That's all of them?
That's all of them.
All right, and to be sure, Lucy, what we're, in this proposal, we're talking about then, if it passes, again, they'd have to, you'd have to have a minimum of five full-time jobs at a minimum of $14 an hour, in addition to those 38, correct, within the, in those two-year, a two-year timeframe? So it'd be in addition to those 38, or is it a little bit retroactive?
It will go back to the date that we received the application for assistance. I believe that was November and...
Last year, right?
Of last year.
Okay.
That's correct. And $14 per hour minimum base, and then on top of that benefits, that's correct.
Okay, so in a way, they've already hit that threshold, then, for the, that piece of the requirement?
That piece, yeah.
That's correct, okay. Paul, when you, I know you said that this would help you, because total, let's say, from the city, what we're looking at, you've got $189,000 over 10 years. And you've invested $10 million, I believe you said that includes that $3 million for the new building?
Yes, it does.
Correct, so yeah, huge amounts of dollars from all your investors, which is awesome. So see if I can frame this right. When I look at that in proportion, that's just a small amount for your business, when you're talking about millions, you know, compared to that. But it's a lot, you know, for, I feel, you know, for the city, you know, taxpayers' dollars, and how best used and served. And I am all for, you know, making a great viable place to work, play, and everything else. So when you say that that would help you with this, if this gets approved, give you, accelerate your growth. So when I look at that in proportion to all the great investment you've done already, and probably continue to do, and then you would want this rebate, you know, from the city, total for over those years, or $18,000 a year, by what timeframe would that accelerate growth? Because let's say if it doesn't pass, you know, I know you're still gonna, you know, keep going forward, so I guess I'm trying to get my arms around, what makes that really important for you? And then, of course, later going to the county, their help as well?
Every company that's in our position, that I know of, is cash constrained, and there's no question about that. And for us, any resource, and we're looking for resources all over the place, any resource that we can bring in more cash allows us to accelerate. Constantly working with my boss, Steve Bowen, you know, we look at reinvesting every dollar we can in our business, and so we look for every opportunity that we can. Is that going to accelerate us dramatically? Probably not, but it will accelerate us. And we're, we're pleased that you will at least consider that tonight, and know that that will, will help us.
Right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the Plasticomp Expansion Project for Economic Development? Anyone else wishing to speak to the Plasticomp Expansion Project? Anyone else wishing to the expansion of the Plasticomp, of that project? Lucy, I got one more question, or comment that you can verify. I believe the building is on city land?
Yes, it is on city land.
Okay, and I checked with, I checked with Steve Hacken today, the value of that land's about $212,000. I think that's...
That's correct.
And did the city, does the city have a lease for Plasticomp on that land?
Yes, we leased them, that was previously approved by council, and it's a 30-year lease that we leased to the company, because it is near the airport, we're not able to sell the land.
And I agree with that, and what was the cost of that lease?
They leased that for $1 per year.
Okay, so it's $30 for the 30 years?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Okay, anyone else wishing to speak to the Plasticomp Incorporated Expansion Project? George?
If this is the time to ask, talking about the total amount of the city share of property tax for 10 years, not to exceed $189, then there's one in there for a percentage of 90%. Could you explain that?
Yes, I'll explain. There's two options. One is to rebate the full amount collected for the 10 years. And the second option, at 90%, whereby the city would retain 10%, that option is put in there, because currently, the all taxing bodies receive approximately $7,500 on the property. That's because they leased it from a tax-exempt entity. So the 90% would be revenue neutral to the city?
Okay. All right, any other questions, Lucy, at this time? If not, I'll ask one more time, is there anyone present wishing to speak to the Plasticomp Incorporated Expansion Project? Okay, I'll close that public hearing and bring it back to council. What is your pleasure? Al?
I would make a motion to approve the resolution, which approves the tax abatement for Plasticomp, and that amount of tax abatement would be at the 100% level.
Okay, there's a motion by Al, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Michelle, questions or comments?
Just a comment that, you know, this is a company that is local. This is our way, I think, as a city, not only with the leases, the mayor has pointed out, but also with this, to confirm that partnership, to retain the company and the community, to further our goals of the composites industry, and to keep, keep the company requiring the minimum of jobs and the reports that they are required to make during the period of this tax abatement.
Okay.
It's worthy of support.
Anyone else on council? Okay, I would just make a comment, and this is just me. First of all, I want to thank Plasticomp for choosing Winona to do their expansion and to be here, and join many other companies that have decided to be here throughout the years. When I look at this, I really don't see a compelling need for tax abatement. And this is just my opinion, tax abatements, in my view, it's a different thing, because whatever's abated has to be made up by everybody else. Someone has to make it up. And in my view, tax abatement should only be used under the most extreme circumstances. And with, this is my comment to city staff, with much higher city criteria than we look at today, I mean, there's companies, a lot of companies that Winona are hiring today, and with a much greater positive impact on the city. And even with all that, I personally would have to take a good look at it before I would vote for any, any tax abatement. Like I said, I don't see, in what I, you know, what I've heard, what I see in our agenda, I don't really see a compelling need for, for this abatement, and that's just where I'm at. Jerry?
First off, I want to, you know, commend Plasticomp for the same reasons everybody else did. I mean, you know, your expansion, Winona, and moving forward, great job. But I agree with the mayor that, you know, at first blush, I was all in favor of this, but the more I looked into it, and as also, it's going to grow one way or the other, and it's, this won't accelerate growth significantly, it will help it some. And my opinion, I think we should reserve, just in my opinion, reserve tax abatement for projects that, nothing against this project, maybe, the only reason that this is maybe a bad thing is they're going to succeed with or without this. And that's, that's a compliment to you, and that compliment's kind of reversed, since it, I'm going to vote against the motion, because I think that you guys have done so well.
Okay, Michelle?
I support this abatement. You're on property owned by the city, which you're improving, which means you're improving property we own, which if you ever leave, that property can't move, it's still ours. I also, as part of the comprehensive plan, it says right in there that we're going to support composite growth. And even if it's one job or five jobs, job growth at a time, an economic climate like this is a plus. And realistically, if you hadn't chosen that building, it would still be tax exempt. So we wouldn't be, I mean, for the, I think, what did we get, 1,500 when you were a tenant? Over this, over this next 10 years, where we rebate back to you, we'll make that up, because you'll continue to improve the property, increasing its value, meaning that the money we get in over the long term is going to far outweigh what we give up in the short term. So I am in favor of this abatement program.
Okay, anyone else? Debbie?
Yeah, I guess I agree with Councilmember Craig. When I said first blush, I thought, yes, you know, this sounds really great, and I'm really excited about what you're doing and going through, you know, the 2008 recession and everything else. And I know, Winona's really blessed, as we said many times, with the diverse industrial manufacturing base, we're very fortunate. And bringing also, I think, compelling reason, like the mayor and others have said, for what we kind of get in return, because I feel the city is supporting, we've got a wonderful piece of property that, you know, it values you well, right by the airport as well, so there's a lot of ancillary things that the city does try to support, and keep our airport up to speed, keep our roads good, keep our infrastructure good, and all the other things that make businesses also want to stay here, employees stay here. We've got the great program, the composites, plastic program at Winona State University, that I know you're getting interns from, and et cetera. So there's a lot of other ways that the city has been supporting and does support businesses, but maybe not particularly in this package that you're asking for. So that's where I see, too, is the, when I, going back to my original kind of statement question, when I look at the great amounts of money that you're very fortunate to have, and wonderful investors, and you're trying to also buy logo, which you do, you know, you buy logo, that amount of money compared to, may seem small in comparison, you know, if it's 189,000 or 170,000 over 10 years, you're still going to be paying, I mean, that's still a lot of money. And again, it's got to come from somewhere, and that's less than the city has, you know, per se. And yes, the value is, is still the property value, is still going to be there, you know, with the, now that it's for profit, you know, that we have it, which is wonderful, that we're also using that. So I guess, in consideration of some of those things, I did a lot of thinking about and hearing what others have said, I won't be able to support this at this time, because I just still believe that, and you had even stated, and I know we talked, and you've stated also, I know in some of the papers, that you will still go forward, and that's why I asked that question, when you say accelerate growth, but like, what's kind of the timeframe? You have been accelerating growth, it's awesome to see, it seems like you're really doing, you're doing well, and you're on track with that at this point, so that would be my view at this time.
Okay, George?
I've spent a lot of time on this issue. I've spoke with the mayor on several occasions, I've been with staff last week, I've toured the facility, I've talked with Lucy, read this over yesterday again, read it over again today, spent time on the phone with Lucy, and I like the project, and I'm going to vote for the project. I keep hearing you, you have good investors, I don't think that is a reason for myself to penalize the company, because they have good investors. It's a company that, that's on the upswing, they made a commitment to be in Winona, the people are here in Winona, they're going to create jobs. I think we probably made some worse decisions than this one. I feel confident that the project is going to be successful for the town, and just, I'm just going to support it.
Okay, Al?
Thank you. You know, I'm hearing discussion, I think, around the table, at least from my perspective, that takes, takes a shorter view than, than I do in, in this issue. I think that by making our commitment now, we really fill in that grander picture of what we want our city to, to be, at least in this instance, as far as the composites industry, and to help a company that meets all of the things that we want companies to do in Winona, in providing jobs, and, and using people that graduate from Winona State's composite programs, or other areas that come to Winona to serve, and are employed in the industry. So I look at this as not so much a short-term decision, but one for the greater, longer viability of our industrial base in the community.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Before we hold the vote, can I...
Sure.
Just have to have an offline discussion with council?
Sure.
Sure.
Not to be secretive, just due to the fact that there is some back leasing going with this organization, back to my present employer, leasing a few, you know, some square footage. And I just wanted to make sure that I have the right to vote tonight without getting this situation muddied up.
Okay.
And the answer was? Okay.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, all in favor of the motion, which is to approve? Approve the tax abatement? In other words, the city share of the taxes that's collected. The tax abatement from the city who went on for Plasticomp. All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, those four, raise your hands. Okay, one, two, three, four. Four against, the motion fails. Thank you.
Moving on to the petitions, requests, and communications. Item 3.1, it's a request for St. Martin's Strawberry Festival in Sinclair Park on Sunday, June 10th. Move to approve the request?
A move by Debbie. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Deb. Questions or comments? Or Michelle? Questions or comments? Okay, all in favor of the motion, which is to approve the request for the St. Mary's Strawberry Festival? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, carry on.
Under new business, item 5.1 is the renewal of the property and liability insurance for 2012 excluding the workers' comp.
Okay, Mary, would you please just go over the figures so the public knows what we're doing here?
Good evening, mayor and council. This is the annual request to, for council action to renew our property and casualty insurance for 2012 for the city. And the amount in your agenda shows as 200, and the total premium, which would be property, mobile property, the auto, bond, access liability, airport. The total shows at about $229,000. In our past meeting, the insurance agent had mentioned that the mobile property was being shown at too high of a rate. He thought it would be less by about $1,400. He'll give me the new figure sometime this week. That compares to a previous year of about $228,200. So actually, with the new rate, our property and casualty will be going down a small amount, it looks like, or else it will be basically the same as 2011 for the same, basic same coverage. We're not proposing to change any of the deductibles or any of the liability coverages.
Okay. Is there a motion? Move by Debbie. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by George. Questions or comments? Okay, all in favor of the motion, which is to approve the renewal of the property and liability insurance for 2012 excluding workmen's comp? All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, carry on.
Item 5.2 is the renewal for 2012 of the workers' compensation and accident plan for city volunteers. There are two resolutions, and you can include them in one motion.
Okay, Mary?
This is the request to renew our workman comp for 2012 for the city. And what we're recommending is to stay with the retro-rated plan versus the straight premium. And the retro-rated plan is where there's a minimum and a maximum amount to pay. And the minimum amount is about $94,000. The maximum is high at $599,800. But in the past, by selecting the retro-rated, we have saved money. I think it's an average of about $80,000, $90,000 per year over like the last three to five years. So we're again recommending, recommending that to go forward for our work comp.
Is there a motion?
There, I would say move to approve the renewal, the premium option called retro-rated minimum factor. It also includes the resolution renewing the accident plan for city volunteers.
Second.
A second by Jerry. Questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, which is to approve, or that includes both resolutions, right? Include the renewal for 2012 for the workers' comp and accident plan for city, for the workers and city volunteers. All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, carry on.
Item 5.3 is a proposed fee for the orderly annexation requests.
Okay, who, Mark? Explain what we're doing here.
In layman's terms, if this proposal is adopted tonight, what it would do is to create a $115 application fee for orderly annexation requests. And council has received a number of these requests over the past number of years. What really stimulated this proposal was the fact that the process, as it stands right now, currently requires us to pay to the state of Minnesota a fee of $25. Once council approves an annexation request, it's forwarded to the state. And with that, with that action, we have to forward $25. Up to this point, the city's been pretty much taking care of that cost. And so we thought that maybe now is a good time to initiate some sort of a fee that would absorb those costs and some of the basic costs that we currently have involved in the process. In your agenda package, we did include a simple flow chart that breaks the process down into a number of small parts, gives you an idea of current costs that we have for the process. And that's how we came up with $115. So in a nutshell, that's what we're proposing tonight.
Move to introduce the attached ordinance?
Second.
Move by Jerry. Second by Debbie. Questions or comments? Question?
Mark, just a quick question. First of all, I really appreciated the flow chart. I like how that broke everything down. You could see, and I was just wondering, you know, G I S mapping an hour for that? Is that, I guess I was trying to...
Yeah, what I did was to contact the folks that have a part in the process. And she indicated that a lot of times it does take an hour to develop a map.
I had nothing to relate it to, so I was just curious to say. Well, there must be more involved in it than, obviously, than I knew of.
And again, it partly relates to the fact that our system, our G I S system, doesn't always incorporate some of these more rural areas. And so she has to spend a little more time working that up.
Thank you. And mayor and council, also, we do have to submit to the state updated election maps. And she provides those for us with our application. Thank you.
Al? I have a few questions of Mark on this issue. Do other cities charge a fee?
I am not sure if they do or not.
Do we have the authority to charge a fee? Okay. You know, I mean, we went through the orderly annexation process, which was a very long, involved, complex issue. And I want to make sure that, you know, there wasn't something in there when the state went through and allowed us to do that that precluded us from charging fees for those kinds of services. I mean, if they're charging us a fee, certainly, we should be able to recover it and recover justifiable costs that we're incurring to process the application.
You okay with that, Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you.
George?
Yeah, I more than likely will support this tonight, but we are the ones that originally led the way for this annexation. Now, the people that are falling within the orderly annexation agreement, we're charging them a permit fee now to annex to the city.
That's true. You could make an argument, maybe this is kind of nickel-dime stuff in a way. But in reality, that property owner will have to pay, if he hooks up to city sewer and water, an access fee of $12,000.
Right, and we're in that.
So again, all we're trying to do, the fee is really no different than any other fee we charge. I mean, for a zone change request or a plat, a subdivision, you could say, well, those benefit the city long term. But in the short term, they benefit a developer too. And in part, that's why they, we ask them to absorb some of those costs. So it's not a huge thing, but, and quite frankly, if we didn't have to pay a fee to the state of $25, I might have just let it go, because we have the process down to a pretty good arc right now, and it runs pretty smoothly. But the idea is to absorb that cost and some others.
No, it's obvious, within the next probably five years, these areas that, you know, that we're talking about, and you know, out in those areas, they're all going to be, they're all going to be have faltering sewer systems. They're all going to be coming into the city. You know, we get one here, one here, next month we get another, two, whatever. Is it worth our while just to simply sit down with those people and say, you know, you know, try to make one push, try to get them all in and get it done with? You know, I mean, you know, every month we're getting somebody. And, you know, the work involved, and, you know, the running of the trunk lines and things. I mean, you know, it's, you know, I would consider that to be more of an expense for us than writing out the permit. Or just, you know, something, you know, something staff can think about.
Right.
You know, do we want to just sit down? Because eventually, they're all going to be coming. And it's just a matter of fact, you know, a matter of time as to when we have them all in. Maybe take one shot, get them all, get it done with.
Send a new application the county has for septic system. That'll get them in.
I mean, they're all going to be coming. I mean, there's no doubt about that, so.
Well, maybe that's something we could add as a further discussion.
You know, so.
Okay. All right, there's a motion on the floor to introduce the ordinance regarding the proposed fee related to the orderly annexation request. Any further comments on that or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
One opposed?
Item 5.4 is the Theater du Mississippi lease agreement for the use of the Masonic Temple. Move to approve the agreement?
Move by Debbie. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Michelle. I see some members of here. I assume you're here for this. Did I answer any questions? Are you satisfied with it? Okay, they're shaking their heads. Any questions or comments from council? Al?
As long as those folks are here, I guess I, you know, they don't, they're not required to do a report, but, you know, the last time we heard about some improvement efforts that they had done to the property, I think painting and things like that, is, are there any more improvements that during this...
Your honor, you want to, you want to say a few words?
You anticipate doing?
Last year, I believe our agreement required us to, it said something like paint two areas. We did more than double that amount, I think. We, using volunteers, we painted the banquet room, the large boardroom downstairs, our two individual spaces, the vestibule outside of the theater, and a hallway outside of the theater. We also paid half of the cost to refinish one of the floors. So we really went over and above what was required of us last year. I guess that's it. That's the report for last year. Plus paying our rent.
Anything coming up in the next year during the lease?
Well, you know, I've talked to Chad about this. We're kind of running out of spaces that we can reasonably paint using volunteers, because we're getting into things like stairwells and things that I would not feel very comfortable having volunteers do. There might be some smaller areas that we could still paint. Some of the other areas are, you know, rooms that are pretty much enclosed and not really accessible to the public. It just doesn't seem like it would be worthwhile to paint those areas. So what we had proposed to do is to work with Chad and see what kind of other projects that we could do in there that would enhance the property, whether they're physical things or promotional things or other things we can do. So the language is a little less specific this time to allow us to expand the kinds of things we can do to help out with that building. We're very committed to that building and doing what we can to support the city's efforts to restore that building.
Great, good partnership. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, which is to approve the lease agreement with Theater du Mississippi? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, carry on.
Item 5.5 is the police department vacancy.
Keith?
Good evening. I had received a notification that one of our investigators is going to retire effective March 31. And I'm looking for approval to replace that position with a promotion within the department, and then hire one officer to fill the vacancy that would be created by that, only in the reverse order, because I want to, if approved, we would go through the hiring process first and get that taken care of, and an officer on the street.
Jerry?
Move to approve the request?
Move by Jerry. Second by Michelle. Questions or comments?
I assume this is revenue neutral, or how would that affect your budget?
Both positions have been budgeted for in 2012, correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? All in favor of the motion, which is to approve the request to hire a full-time police officer? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, carry on.
Item 5.6 is a request to fill the vacancy at the wastewater treatment plant.
Keith?
Thank you, mayor and council. We've also had a resignation at the wastewater plant. This is for the night watchman position, which is a lot of maintenance and security and watching a lot of the physical grit chambers and things like that. And we'd like to refill that position. It's vital to the wastewater plant.
I'll move to approve the request.
Move by Debbie. Is there a second? By Michelle. Questions? Al?
Keith, is this a full-time position?
Yes, it is.
Yes, okay. Just to comment on the position, when you refer to some of the duties as cleaning the bar screen and things, and I've been to the sewer treatment plants, and I know what that job entails, and, you know, there's a program, I think, what is it called? Dirty Jobs or something like that? That would qualify.
Well, it's interesting. The other day, I got a call from Peerless, from Tammy over there, that the odor was kind of moving through the area. And so I called down, and sure enough, they were mixing. They were mixing that morning, so by 12 o'clock, it was all cleared up. But I think Peerless are the ones, they noticed that right away. That wind must blow.
That's the day we didn't have lunch.
Great service, though, a great facility.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Yes.
Oh, we do. Okay, all in favor of the motion, or is there any other discussion? You all in favor of the motion, which is to fill the vacancy at the wastewater treatment plant? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, carry on.
Item 5.7 is the certification of completion, final estimate, and resolution of acceptance for the Parks Avenue Water Main.
Move to approve?
Move by George. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Michelle. Questions? Okay, all in favor of the motion, which is to approve the certification of completion and final estimate resolution of acceptance for the Park Avenue Water Main? And all in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, carry on.
Item 7.1 is council concerns.
I'll start with Al tonight.
I just want to reinforce Senator Boadway's comment about the city's website. It looks very nice, and people should log on. It's cityofwinona-mn.com. Okay, good. Jerry?
Nothing to say.
Michelle?
Thank you, your honor. Chad's not here, but we had the discussion earlier, and we were talking about our liability insurance about covering the organ at the Masonic Temple. And I did bring up at our pre-council meeting that maybe, to make sure, I guess to look at that and really sees that's something that's viable? What are options? Do we need to keep it still, or...
to keep it still, or kinda what's on the horizon for that? As much as it's great, it's old, but as we brought up, I was talking about the organ, because we talked about the coverage earlier at pre-council meetings, so I was saying, maybe we could really see if staff can look at, a hard discussion about it, you know, whether that's something is unfortunately worthwhile still to keep, and what are the options would be great. I just wanted to say, the Frozen River Film Festival is here next week, January twenty-fifth to the twenty-ninth, at Winona State University, but in particular, I, I wanna mention one premiere showing of a documentary film that they will be having, and, because I am president this year of the Winona Dakota Unity Alliance, and the film is called Dakota Thirty-Eight, it's a premiere showing, as I said previously, it'll be Sunday, the twenty-ninth, at one o'clock, I was able to see, a couple of us were able to see a preview showing on it, it's very, very good, and particularly, some of the people in this film, I know some of us know or have met, have been in Winona as well, but it's the ride that a group of the, right, Dakotas took in remembrance, to retrace this, of the hanging of the thirty-eight of the Dakota ancestors on December twenty-sixth, eighteen sixty-two, and they rode from, I believe, from Crow Creek Reservation, South Dakota, three hundred and thirty miles to the hanging site in Mankato. And just to add to that as well, because our great Dakota homecoming and gathering for this year, we are looking to commemorate the hundred and fiftieth year since the Dakota uprising of eighteen sixty-two, and we have moved, and our event will be in September fourteenth to the sixteenth, so encourage everyone, just, of course, for sure, go to the film festival, incredible amount of films, but I wanted to make sure to mention this film that will be showing on Sunday.
Is that the only day that it'll show?
That's the only day it'll show, at one o'clock, the filmmaker will be here, as well as one of the man that really had the vision, they said Jim Miller, and the filmmaker Silas Haggerty is, is coming in from Washington, D.C., and it is free, it'll be at Samson Auditorium, passholders will get priority seating, otherwise, it is a free screening, so encourage everybody to go, thank you.
Thank you, Deb? George?
Okay, the HRA Board of Directors met this afternoon at four o'clock, and I'm pleased to announce that they have reappointed Steve Zalondick, as we know him more as Boomer, he will be, he will continue to serve as the chairman of the board, and I will be serving again as vice chairman of the HRA Board, so good luck to him and the rest of the staff out there. And I just simply wanna send out some birthday greetings to three very young ladies in the east end of Winona, first being Eleanor Bamanic, who once lived on Mankato Avenue, she now resides up, up west, she's celebrating her ninety-third birthday, my mother's neighbor, Florence Grupa, just celebrated her ninety-second birthday, and if you get to Midtown Foods this week, you see that real good-looking young lady that serves the samples, she will be ninety on Sunday, so happy birthday to all three of those.
Must be the water, George.
That's gotta be the water, right, all east end, so.
I forgot something, uh, tomorrow evening, there'll be a West End Neighborhood Watch meeting at six o'clock at the American Leachon Classroom.
Okay, thank you.
Under the consent agenda, there are four items, approval of the minutes from January third, and the final adoption of three ordinances, the first to vacate a portion of Outlaw C in Creekwood, an ordinance to establish no parking on West Second Street, and an ordinance to change ten-minute parking to a loading zone on East Third Street. Move to approve the consent agenda?
Move by Debbie, is there a second? Second by Al, questions? All in favor of the motion, which is to approve the consent, which is the minutes and three ordinances, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Carry.
Honor, a move, we turn.
Move by Jerry, is there a second? By George, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, carry. Thank you very much.